I call this meeting in town council for the release and reinvocation. I'm standing for the federal elections, Mr. Gooding will lead us to the flags to our to my right behind us. Our love we thank you for the good which it is to serve. We thank you tonight for the opportunity we have to make our community a better place. In this Thanksgiving season, there's been things we have to thank you for. We thank you that we live in a land like America where we choose our leadership with ballots and not bullets. We ask oh God for the peace of Jerusalem tonight. We ask that he would chief us and help us tonight that every decision that we made could be in the best interest of our community. And all these things, we ask that you would get yourself the glory in it. Amen.
Amen. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here and thank you for having the representation of the sheriff's office again tonight. You have had a chance, I trust that you have had a chance to look at the minutes and those things of consent agenda. Is there any items that we need to take off of consent agenda and consider by sale? If the county attorney entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda which includes the approval of tonight's agenda, the minutes from past meetings, financial statements, and the minutes of the fire department.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Now.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Schwartz now?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Landry, I do not see present. Mr. Phillips.
All the preparations forgot to mention. Cindy's around. Sorry. Thank you. Senator, I'll demonstrate.
So, thank you for the chance to let me meet with you. I just wanted to bring to you some options for us to start looking forward. When I first introduced myself to the council, I said I'd love for us to figure out how to organize a way to get community members involved. And these are just two options for you to mull over and then maybe, you know, this is going to be a long term, not asking you to make decisions tonight. Be glad to ask any questions you have about it. And of course, I think there's probably going to be some legal considerations as always. So, thought I'd throw out some options and maybe we can come back together, you know, by the end of next year or whenever that could take place and see how we look at this. I think Jeff would probably have a better, Mr. Carter would have a better feel for what, you know, what we need to look at legally. But just wanted to, I'm not going to really go down all these intently, but the main deal about this is that both of these, if we do it, a volunteer group would literally just be a group of people who you've designated to say, this is a volunteer group that we've approved, accepted, whatever the wording would be, that you would want to be involved in helping the city specifically. And that group, my idea would be that maybe there would be a leader of that group that would coordinate with the staff, whether it would be your maintenance guy or it would be directly with the office staff or however you wanted that communication to go. And they may help with things. Some of the things I thought about is like literally going to pick up trash cans or delivering people trash cans who are late or whatever the maintenance guy may need. Maybe he needs somebody just to stand outside a hole while he works one day. Or maybe he does have a something that if someone could hand him tools, it'd make his job feel faster. I don't know, just some way, and again, you just don't want anybody standing in there, right? You want to know who they are and you want to be able to pre-approve that. All of this, the main point about this is that this, if someone's going to be approved to work, it's going to come to the city council first and they're going, I mean, town council, and they're going to consider that. We're not just going to have people walk up and say, hey, I'm volunteering. There'll be a little bit of pain in that in the first maybe few years, maybe a few months. But I think it's better to have pain and a good entry point than to have just people walking up and saying, I'm going to help today, and you don't have any idea about them. And again, I'm not trying to detail all of that, but the main point I wanted to make was that the, anything in this organization would be at the total will and discretion of the town council. This would never move outside them doing anything that the town council had not decided they could do. In both of these organizations, I would propose that during that inter-meeting, is that right? Inter-meeting period, that they would have the, the, the direction, that they could carry out things without necessarily, like if someone asked them to carry out something and it fell within the discretion that you had already aligned, that they could go ahead and carry that out rather than coming back. So, some inter-meeting discretion, again, as much as you allow. I would propose that probably this starts very limited and we don't want this to get crazy. But I was thinking even when y'all do those monthly mailings, you know, to have somebody come in and help you stuff envelopes or whatever the case may be. Something that right now, we don't really have an organization for and that I'd love to see us take place. The second idea about that, not only the volunteer group, but also just, I call it Parks and Recreation Board. I know that Parks and Recreation Boards have had a bad thing in the past, but one of the things I've tried to call out in the formation of this board would be a couple of things I think would be very important. Number one is this board could change at any town council meeting. I don't want you to get stuck with board members that you have to deal with for a year. I think the charter of this should be off the bat that if you need to replace somebody or pull somebody off at a town council meeting, you can. Number two, the direction of the board could change at any council meeting. And so, you can't say, well, they told us we could do this. No, in the last town council meeting, it was decided we're no longer doing that. And I think that would be needed at least in the first few years to develop some trust and, you know, an understanding that this isn't a board that's just going to go off and do what they want, let people do things that they want, but they're going to do it at the discretion of the board. And so, I'm just trying to bring you some ideas of organization. That's a double sided piece of paper, by the way, if you hadn't discerned that yet. And I know I'm just throwing out some ideas and you've just seen this, but are there any questions or clarifying thoughts you have? Try not to take up too much of your time since this is an actionable item. Love to answer any of your individual questions if you want to call me during the off weeks. I know you haven't had a chance to digest, so I want to be fair to you.
I would like to have time to state a little more.
Sure.
When you presented the concept way back, I think we all thought it was a good idea.
Yes, sir.
And sometimes you have to look for what could go wrong with good ideas.
Absolutely.
And certainly, the word.
That's some of the various issues involved.
Yeah.
Governments and.
Absolutely.
Some like commentary about using city equipment, resources.
Absolutely. And if you need to not allow that or need just to, we need to delete it.
Discuss it, yeah. See what the council wants to do, is willing to do and can do.
Yeah, sure.
Legally and which is.
Yeah. And that was one of the things I thought about. I really needed to approach this with the ideas. So, like my idea is that I would want to help lead this up to get started. But the truth is, this can't be personality based, right? You need the protections of any personality.
Right.
And so, that's why I kind of thought I should back up, kind of give you a formal listing of some thoughts and then let you digest it. Okay, that's all I have.
I think after, after our meeting earlier, and I just, I didn't know how much we could talk about, and we can talk as much as you want to, council, but I had a couple of things and now written that quickly when you handed me these.
Sure.
One of them is going to be, and Mr. Carter will certainly help us, is going to be the liability, service, compensation, anything like that. And then, with our, with our, with our situation with labor, et cetera, et cetera, I'm afraid of over utilization. After a while, if I call on you every day to come do something that we have a paid employee to do, you won't say, well, let me have a job.
Yes, sir.
Not meaning to, Phil.
No, absolutely. That's what I'm saying.
Members of the group.
Got to keep this non-personal.
Payable utilization, we'd have to be careful about that. But the concept, I like it.
Yes.
And one of the things I like about it is the involvement of the, of the community, that we need to involve the community. And I think we've too long had personality enforcement, personality reaction, responses up and, and maybe not been proactive sometimes, I know, but while we're going through some transitions now, I think we've got time for us to look at things that we may, would like to be done differently.
Yeah. And one of the things I thought about is that I know that you and your staff, they're trying to work at getting that work order being honed and, you know, directions, daily directions of all your team members. And you're right, that'll have to mature for this to be a good, I agree with you, that work order, you know, that responsibility of your staff. So, thank you for mentioning that.
Mr. Porter, do you have any questions tonight?
I need to study this a little bit.
Sure. Nothing I, we're all standing.
All right, thanks for your time.
Do you understand this?
Sure.
Are you, how quickly, we've got the holidays and we've got a couple of meetings, but.
Absolutely. I don't see this as something we're going to be able to rush into. I want it to be done right so that everyone is protected, so that the volunteers are happy and pleased as well as the council. So, as, as you could process it.
We actually, first, maybe put it on the January agenda or.
Sure, I would expect that thing before the end.
Okay.
And really, that'd just be for me to answer more questions.
Would you, please, put that on the January? Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Landry still listening here, Mr. Smith, Chief Smith.
Hello. I'm Edel Smith, also a volunteer fire department, for the record. Anyway, over the last, well, since we built the fire department, we've been noticing a major problem. The, the frontage is getting used and more and more and more by people visiting town hall for either meetings or when they rent up with the space out, stuff like that, to the point where they're literally taking up all the parking spaces where we have nowhere to park. Should we get a fire and have to respond, our people doesn't have anywhere to park other than further away. And the business we're in is time matters. So, we'd appreciate being able to keep our parking spaces at least in some capacity. Me and the mayor's talked and we agree, we agree that, you know, handicap area needs to be left open and some spaces for the older members of our community. However, maybe at least, we're asking for maybe at least four to be designated as fire department parking home. And I think that's pretty reasonable to ask when there's probably ten spaces out there, I believe. So, that's my ask for, for you as the council to allow us to designate those spots. We'll pay for the signs, we'll pay, we'll put up four by fours with the signs on them, make it look nice on our budget, but we just want, you know, clear transparency between both sections, both the council and the fire department.
But the chief called me, he sent me a picture of, I thought it was actually happening on the same day as Trump retreat, I think it was a.
It was a separate, separate thing going on here, yes.
Yeah. And everything was, was really out there. And I thought that if I remember right, you can't leave before you have so many men. It may be the first four or two in.
Well, we need two, we need two to leave the truck, to our trust.
Yeah. And, and I thought that, and I put the down, so this will take care of, on down with the mayor's name, that if we could designate those first four, the suggestion to the handicap, be handicapped those first four, and that will take us just beyond the door. There's going to be, I counted for that, I think it needs six.
Actually, after, after we talked, we're okay with taking the end four. It doesn't, it's, it's okay to us, you know? We, we want the older residents to be able to use that, you know, the concrete instead of the grass, stuff like that. But that's, there's nothing wrong with that and we appreciate that.
I suggest it, I suggest it for.
Yes, sir.
And if it does make you, I was just going to hook on to the handicap if you could do that. And that's a good thought about if we had older or, or people that need a handicap, but we would need to stencil the parking bumpers or put up something that says reserve, BFD parking only or something like that. If we can do that on a public.
We can, and what I was just thinking too is how, what enforcement mechanisms do we want to put in place? Because typically, I mean, people abide by it and it's not a problem. And that might be the first approach is see if just regular signage takes care of it. But if people ignore that, they park in those spaces anyway, we would need something, we would need ordinance that would allow the sheriff's department or whoever to come in and cite people or tow them. And then, of course, your tow signs have to have certain information on those for those to be valid, it has to be in ordinance. And that's real easy to draft and prepare if you thought we need to go that far, if the signs themselves didn't just handle the problem. But we can do it.
Yes, sir. Can we come back to that, that avenue second, could we try to see if it would work?
Absolutely.
I like that better than just the.
Yeah, give it a middle approach.
Yes, sir. That way, Mr. Porter, any thoughts on that?
I think that's a good thinking, I, you know, I park out there sometimes, I park out here. I mean, yeah, it needs to be open, you know, in case you want to park.
I actually park, I manage myself.
Yes, sir. I do.
I don't think it's no problem, but we'll handle that, you know, I think, I don't think there'll be no problem. If you do, we'll go far, you know?
I like it being the, the last four towards my house.
Sure. And that's fine.
But the idea is.
But the idea is good.
Yeah, it's good.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
And Sheriff would entertain a motion then that we designate the eastern four parking spaces as BFD parking only and the chief and the company will, will place the purpose signage.
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion. You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'll make it.
We have a motion, is there a second?
How second?
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Schwartz now?
Yes.
Sheriff, yes, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sound like a base.
Appreciate you.
Okay, do you have other news for us? Is actually, is actually in the minutes?
We're doing good. We have no issues.
No new?
I don't have any issues to bring to them.
Well, I, according to the minutes, you've had your annual election and.
Yes.
And we have to ratify, we have to ratify that vote.
Yes, they voted to keep me as chief and as well as our officers, all stayed the same. It was just a simple vote, there was no argument, it was quick, easy, and over. And it was, that's what I like, it was cool. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Smith and the minutes report that the annual election of officers for the fire department has been done and that the votes retain all the current officers in their same position. We need to ratify that or if we don't want that to be what it is, we need to change. What's the pleasure of the council?
I make a motion to accept.
We have a motion to ratify, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And discussion on the motion. How you vote, Ms. Porter?
Yes.
Porter? Yes. Sheriff, yes. Congratulations, chief.
I'll keep doing what I'm doing.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
Wow. Okay. Anyone else on the unattended audience? Mr. Landry still not kind of okay. Madam Porter?
I just have two things. One is that at the last meeting, y'all had asked the clerk to look as if there was money for an OPS maintenance worker. Margaret and I went over the budget, there is money that was set aside in the budget for an OPS worker. Right now, we're utilizing that money to pay her to come train me, although she feels like she's wrapping up my training. She's still going to be coming back, she promised me, to help me pay bills and do reports and stuff. But, so the money is there, but tonight I wanted to ask the council if we could hold off on that decision until maybe the December or January meeting. I had a brief meeting with Tim, the maintenance worker, and he and I are going to sit down right after Thanksgiving and look at his workload, his time, time sheets, the daily work sheets that he had done, and look at the amount of work, what the workload is to see if we can get a better feel whether or not we need an OPS worker. I want to change up the time sheets a little bit to more clearly identify what he's working on, how long he's working on it, maybe get more work orders in with the council and other things as we go around town looking. And so, that's my recommendation, but not whatever the council wants to do. But the, there is money there. We've been utilizing some of it, there is OPS money there.
Any, any discussion?
I have a John, where's Margaret over here with you? She, after today, she said she wouldn't be back until December 4th.
Oh, okay.
So, she's going to leave me a few weeks to see how I do.
That's good.
December 4th will be a report time and a new pay period. We fixed the pay period for next week and she's going to look at, I'm going to go ahead and put the bills and stuff in, and she's going to look at them before I hit pay bills to make sure they're all right. So, she said December 4th she'd be back.
I've been missing something, Johnny, and I would, I'll call before I go over and make sure if there's a good time. If you know, not well, and, and I've asked Margaret and she seems to think that Lynn is doing very well, maybe a little ahead of the curve and, and learning and digging at what we need and about that. I believe that I heard her say, the last time I signed checks, that she was here, that she wouldn't be, wouldn't, I don't, this is not, this is not verbatim, but it's to the effect that she didn't think she, you would need her at all after the first of the year, after the end of the year, unless it's so much work for you, something that's new that you only do vacationing. Is that what you think?
That's what she thinks.
That's what she thinks.
I'm hoping.
I hope so, it's waiting, I hope so, it's waiting. We're at six town, time clock again on my portion of the agenda. I'd like to go back and pick up on that OPS worker, or I can do it now, it's going to go soon. Well, you go ahead and do, do your, you finish yours and then I'll come back at my time. Thank you, Chief Smith.
Thank you. Let me go to the next thing.
Please.
The next thing is gates for the George Rogers Park. This past weekend, someone broke into the concession stand at the park, pushed the door in, messed up some of the windows. We've got the, it's secured and we did make a report with the sheriff's office. Margaret had said sometime back, I think when Steve Hallmark was here, that the council had approved buying gates out there, and, but they were never purchased. So, this is just kind of an FYI that we're going to get Tim to go ahead and purchase the gates so that we can lock it up out there so they won't be able to actually get into the restroom area or the concession stand area.
Can't, can't go to the gates in any way.
Right.
If I would get in.
Yeah. And there's no.
I have a sensation that the gate would stop them.
Yeah.
I don't know. There's nothing in there, I mean, there's nothing in that concession.
Yeah, why, why do you want to go there?
Oh, you don't know how much fun it is to drop a cheer bomb in a commode. That's, that's what they want to do. And tying things together, I see that being an excellent thing for a volunteer person to say that every day at four o'clock or five o'clock, they will lock those gates. Somebody that lives in the community, it could be five different people on five different dates or something, that if, if the other proposal comes to fruition, that would be kind of thing, we wouldn't have to have an employee to go by and close that, we just have somebody that would do that, if that's, if they would take that on. As far as the gates, do you need us to vote on that again or will you find minutes that, that, I'm sure Margaret said we did that.
Yeah.
We probably did, we need to, do we need to reaffirm that vote or what y'all think?
We're going to save it from having to search the minutes. Just a quick vote on it.
Yes, sir. And Sheriff would entertain a motion to buy gates and have them installed toward commercial Rogers Park.
Where are we getting these gates from? Where do you give them, truck supply? I don't, I don't know. I have no idea where they come from.
You could probably get some there, probably get some in surplus, truck supply will be good quality, they'll be high priced. I don't tend to over.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Probably get them at any farm supply place and just.
Farm gates?
Yeah, farm gate, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, I don't think we want anything decorative or anything out there, but just a farm gate.
Well, they got an arch and a straight through them.
They do.
Yeah.
They do. What's the pleasure of the council?
The Honorable motion, we purchase gates for toward commercial Rogers Park.
Okay. We have motions or a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. The sheriff vote yes, Ms. Schwartz now?
Yes.
Ms. Porter? Yes. Ms. Carter?
Yes.
You, I'm a customer here, I've got one more thing.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Porter, do you have anything for the council tonight?
No, no, that's definitely not.
Okay, Ms. Reitberg is, is not with us tonight. Mr. Schwartz now, do you have anything for the council?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, Ms. Carter, anything for the council tonight?
Did we get the water bill straightened out? Which, which one's now? For the last month when everybody's bill went up, or not everybody, but some people's bills went up and everybody got mad.
Well, we, we're still having some disgruntled customers, but we're handling them. We're, I think this.
Did you get the problem taken care of?
I think so, Marcy might could.
Um, at the, last year, two, 2022, Rule Water came out and did a kind of audit to see where we were on our budget, on our budget for water. And they recommended that we go up October of last year thirty-five percent and each year after that in October, five percent. And that's what you'll see in the October, water bill is a five percent increase, which I think for the minimum water bill, it went up two dollars and some change. And that's, we have a lot of customers that are at that minimum, so they probably saw the two dollar up increase.
Correct.
But it'll continue for the next three years, five percent.
Do we have a lot of questions? Do we have a lot of questions?
Not a lot. No, I just had two customers call or one came in, I had one customer call about it and I explained it to her and she was, she was pretty content with that and understood and remembered when we had talked about it last year, going up for the next several year, five years, and going from thirty-five percent the first year, then five percent each year after that. But she understood and, yeah, just two, there was one other one that, that was, said she had an increase, but she had went over her minimum by nine cent. That's why she was a little upset, but it was a nine, nine cent increase.
I, I haven't had any calls about the, that, I, I only call up out of order and for the longest time was, had one call and since you're saying this about the, I don't even know if mine or not, I just, I just hate it, but had one that called said that they had a large bill and it was usage, it was not the, it was not the amount, but it was the usage that we had charged more than what they used. But unless that meter is messed up or something, if it goes to that meter, it.
Remind me which one that was again? Troy Landry, who was on the agenda, he had a leak and it, and it was on his side and he had told me that he had a leak and all, but he, of course, asked that, that we bring it before the council to see if it could be adjusted. I think it was sixty-seven dollars more than what his regular minimum is. But it was, it was not our equipment, it was not on our side, it was completely his side, but he did ask for an adjustment if possible.
You know, you know, we, we have did some adjustments in the past and we haven't done them, so, you know, he's, he's been a sort of a problem if I recollect, looking at the water uses for, every year I've been out here on the council that I can remember, but I just wouldn't go there. I wouldn't go to the adjustments. That's my own personal thinking, okay? I mean, but everybody might be different, so I don't know.
Well, what I've noticed in the past, it's usually a big amount when, when you've done adjustments.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's totally up to the council if they want to help him with the sixty-seven dollar overage this month, you know?
But I'm speaking for myself, I mean, you got.
And in, and in the past, I think we've always, whoever wanted it, it came and, and I wouldn't.
Ask for it.
I wouldn't start putting our staff in the position of asking for somebody else that.
Making that decision.
That person, that person. We went to Foley, Christmas was a year ago, and I had a broken line and mine was a hundred That person, that person. Uh, we went to Foley, Christmas was a year ago, and I had a broken line and mine was a hundred and fifty or sixty dollars, seems like. I did, when they did it, Margaret called us or maybe that time Steve, somebody called us and, and, uh, they did go over and cut my meter off so I didn't continue to get worse, but, uh, I paid the bill and I'm sure me and others have done that. We did make an exception a couple of months ago, not so much to reduce the bill as it was to give him some time to pay off the water's bill. But I think we, I think you've got, there's an adjustment needs to come to the council that's.
Yeah.
And you asked about which one for me?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Palmer, uh, former mayor, uh, she called and said her bill was large and the amount of water she used, she'd never used that much and didn't have a leak. Sometimes we've also had other people that said didn't have a leak, didn't have a leak and they found out that you had a toilet that was continually running or something. I don't know about her. She never called me back. And, but she, uh, that was, that's the only one I had, but it was not about the rates. It was about the usage.
Well, uh, in her case, um, we replaced her meter. Uh, when I did the meter readings, it, it showed a leak and I let her know. I checked, before I let her know, I had Tim to come and check all of our equipment to make sure it wasn't on our side. And he said, uh, he checked everything on our side and even around the vicinity and there was nothing on our side, uh, leaking. He, um, as a courtesy, went ahead and changed out the meter, uh, just to make sure and it is still spinning as of the last, when he changed it, it was still spinning. So there is a leak somewhere on his side, on her side, and I have notified her of that. But, um, you know, everybody thinks they don't have one, but it's somewhere.
If that, if that thing's spinning, it's going to the, it's going to the meter.
It could be a root. It could be, you know, most people check the toilets and faucets and hose bits. Always mention those things first. Those things that are easy to check, but.
And remember, Mr. Dwayne Corr had that same thing about two years ago or something like that and, and it was right in the neck on his side of the meter. It was right, like even in the meter box. And, uh, so if you change, if you change out the meter box, you might have found that, but, uh, that's the only call I've had. None about the, none about the rates. I think we advertised the rates at the time and, uh, that we did that for work last year.
And I offered to have her to come and speak to the council, just like Mr. Landry, and, um, so, you know, hopefully she'll be able to do that.
Yeah. Okay?
That's all I got.
That's all you guys?
That's all I got.
Okay, uh, let me, we've done the V F D parting. Uh, let me talk to us in just a minute. Uh, the time clock. Uh, and again, we, we quit having the, uh, quarterly meeting with the employees because we were not sure how productive they were and it's probably sometimes at this advantage if we talk about employees that aren't here, but they can always get an audience with us and we, they can come to the meeting. But, uh, accountability is a, is a really big thing, especially with public employees. And, uh, we did the clock, we didn't do the clock or that because there was resistance maybe within the, within the, uh, office and some things like that. But when, when the clerk says, I met the employee going through Vernon, headed home at two o'clock in the afternoon and we don't know where he is, he had to punch that clock at four o'clock. We didn't know where he was at four o'clock. And, uh, we have a clock here. Uh, uh, I didn't know how to punch a clock, but I had to have a time sheet and have an accountability to a, to a supervisor and many times worked with time clock. I don't know if time clock is the answer, but, uh, again, going along with an OPS worker, if, uh, it's hard to determine that we need an OPS worker if we don't have a paid worker that's coming in for the lunch or class three times a week sometimes.
Well, that's very true.
And, uh, yeah, I think there's no work here for two people to, especially in part-time. And I think that's where Tim actually follows it, it, uh, is he forty hours? Tim is, yeah, Tim's the only one that, uh, that is ten longer, but, uh, uh, I just wonder if there's some way we can increase accountability. I think having a talk with him is gonna be a good thing and I think we expect you to be, that's what we interviewed you, that there's gonna be things that we needed to, uh, change perhaps and, uh, but we just need to have accountability and he needs to be accountable too. If he gets hurt, uh, you're outside of working like that by yourself, you need to have a, a call in every hour, a couple of hours or something like that. They need to make sure something's all right. Uh, you're out there laying under a pole or a tree or a limb or something like that or everything and we can't get to you. We need to, we need to know where he is even in the course of the day. That's my opinion. I'm like John, now that's my opinion. Uh, can we discuss that in just a minute, see where everybody is, how we feel about that?
Well, we could do a time sheet where you could sign in. We didn't have a time clock at the post office. I had to sign me a little sheet what time I arrived and what time I went home, how much time I took for lunch.
Yeah.
And just to print.
Yeah.
Uh, didn't Margaret say the time clock was broken?
Oh, I don't know.
She said that at the last meeting.
Okay, I, I don't remember, but.
Well, he could check in with the clerk when he got here, right behind that, so, and then, uh.
No, have him come to sign.
Or sign whatever.
Have him come in and do it himself.
Sign in and sign out.
Sign in and sign out.
And that, yeah, that. And I think, I think that's important because if you're just gonna call in, you could be sitting in the living room in Vernon and say, I'm knocking on. Unless they know where he is, they may think he's leaving the faucet, perhaps he's headed home.
That's why I say, I'd rather him come in and sign it himself. It's all man right.
I agree with that.
Mayor, is that gonna be part of the question? If I can interject just for a second about the Life 360 on the phones? Is that a separate issue? We're not talking about putting that on employees' phones, are we? Or are we?
They're on the city phones.
Yeah, if they have a city phone, because that's another way to monitor their whereabouts.
Yeah.
If that's something we want to get them to, um, to call.
If I can just say something, I don't have an opinion either for or against it, but I think we need to create, I think we need to understand clearly the rules of the workday. It's been the policy, just a few weeks I've been here, it's been the policy for a long time here that if you work, if you work through your lunch, you can leave early or if you need, you know, to run, do something, you can run, do that and then you kind of adjust the hours around. I think that might be some of the problem, a little confusion about what you're allowed to do and not to do. And so at some point, I think we need to firm that up a little bit.
Well, I think he should call in when he goes from one job to the next, just like Roger Bell said, in case he gets hurt. He's out there by himself. We need to know where he's at.
I agree.
I don't see where that's a big problem.
And this, uh, this working through lunch, I didn't take a lunch, in his day, we're paying for lunch. He don't take one, he can get paid anyway. So that, that number worked for me. I didn't take a lunch from one o'clock to three o'clock, but if your hours are eight to four, you need to work eight to four. Uh, and this, uh, uh, working through lunch, uh, well, you're paid for lunch, so, uh, I think that'll be, will be pre-approved if he, if I'm into something and this, Tim asks for twelve and I can finish it in twenty or thirty more minutes, it makes sense for me to stay with it. So I call up here and I say, uh, I'm gonna short my lunch to twelve thirty instead of twelve or I'm gonna do something like that. That working through lunch needs to be pre-approved and, and, uh, and, and that's, uh, if we get other employees, we, that, or the problems we have to, and everybody with the same approach, I think.
But we. We would do the time clock or the time sheet for all of Paulings, Marcy and Lynn?
I think so.
Mm-hmm. I think so too.
I think so, uh, and, and, and I would say sometimes it may not be so much as a trust issue. I don't, I don't want a trust issue now, but it could be a liability issue for us to, uh, we need to know that they're at work and not work. I'm not sure if it'd be worth complaining.
If he doesn't rank at three o'clock at the Dollar General in Vernon, it's issued.
That's right.
And him saying he's on the clock.
That's, that's a problem now. It's a problem. It's up to us to try to fix it where we can along them. It's hard to get the main up speakers that are devoted to their jobs and they say that, but I don't, it's.
This is, this is a small town and et cetera, et cetera. But when you look at the benefits.
It's good.
It, I mean, he, he, he don't have to go to mobile to make it. He didn't have to be offshore three weeks at a time. Don't have to do lots of things.
Yeah.
Twelve days holiday, twelve days sick leave.
He's got a pretty good job.
It's not, it's not bad, it's not bad being, being this close to home and, and doing that well. So, what, Mr. Mr. Carter, do you want to chime in? Do you want to lead us a little bit here or?
I'm all for it. I agree with Lynn and everything that y'all have said, but it's, it's due to the accountability and defining it and making it defined. It really takes all the liver and muscle. I mean, I hate to monitor adults, I mean, working with corporations in other counties and municipalities. I mean, mostly in the private sector, it's easier, but in the public sector, it tends not to work. They'll have given that freedom of leeway in my experience. But I tend to agree with y'all that I think having the parameters is important.
You said that you had some ideas. Is this something that we can solve tonight? Do you need to bring us back some of your ideas? Have you meet with Tim and Marcy if you need to, if you need to meet with both of us? Do you want to bring us back some of those ideas and then us vote on them or can we solve this tonight?
The ideas I have are not really anything the council will have to vote on. I want to firm up their time, their, um, work orders. I, I, they're kind of broad and I really don't tell you anything. Like, when a work order comes in here, I listed, dated it. I want to see what, put on there when it was given, to whoever it needs to be given to, when it was given back, to see if it's taken a week, two weeks, a month. Um, and then the daily worksheets are really useless that we have. Try to firm them up more in time. What you did from eight to nine and from nine to ten, from ten to twelve, those kind of things.
That's not even, that's, people can write down anything they want to only, that's what I mean.
That's true.
They will, I mean, that's not, that's not, that's not that good to me. That's, that's my.
It, it, yeah, and you said, when we created that form, it's like, uh, uh, for the, for the job was what it was and material was used, we used thirty feet of pipe or three hundred feet of pipe. We used a dozen valves or whatever it might be or whatever it is. We need to know if we use as a trailer load of big wood asphalt. We never worked it to and some things like that. I haven't, uh, looked up.
And as I said, I'm good either way. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what, what the policy, what you want the policy to be on the town workers. If they work eight to four, do you want them to hear eight to four every day? If they leave, they have to take leave time or whatever. If they can leave, work through their lunch or not work through their lunch. I think we need a clear policy so that everybody is doing the same thing.
And you know, it, it might be good to keep up with their leave time or, you know, or they say, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm out of leave. They lay down, they're having their leave already and they exhausted that.
I think you, you expressed it very well. I'd like to see just those things and the things that Mr. Carter was talking about. I'd like to see that begin to happen. And, uh, and I'm good with the sign in, sign out versus repair the clock or buy the clock if everybody else sees it.
Well, there's no reason, and there's no reason that him going from one job to the next, he can't call in. Most of the time, he has to come back in and get supplies anyway.
I don't know. I still do. You were active with the commissioners since I have been, but, uh, every morning, every employee at the public works started at the public works in a room and they were given assignments, the, uh, greater crew here, the hauling crew here, the, something else, the pipe crew here, something like that. And those supervisors knew where they were going to be and, and, uh, things like that way back when. And, uh, I, I don't think we're asking anything unreasonable.
I don't either. I don't see why he can't do it.
Yeah.
It don't seem to be a, a really hard issue to call in and say, I'm going to so-and-so's, check so-and-so's meter.
Yeah.
At such, such an address.
We don't, there's documentation of it also. If there are questions later, that gives you something to rely back to. That's a good thing also for your paperwork.
Yeah.
Somebody was saying he wasn't there, you know.
Does he still fill the work order out? Does he still need that?
We're, we're not doing it right now, but we're going, we're, we're going to, we're, we're gonna.
Do that or replace it with something that we'll, we'll, you know.
Yeah, well, I, I do the work order, you know, he, he fills them out and tells us where he went, where he had them. Where he went, what time, what time he missed.
How long he had them there. When he signs it, that'll mean that it's through. We will, if you give them a request in here, they issue a work order on it. We want to come back three weeks from now and it's still stuck on the countertop in there.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Um, just since we're on the subject about work orders, um, there is a software that the county uses. It's called iWork and it's a system or software that, um, you put in work orders. You can put in supplies and all that. It is a little pricey. Um, I think for, there's two sides to it. There's a public side and a, um, like a staff side. Uh, I think this, just the staff side is like two thousand dollars a year to be able to use the software. Um, I have done a little bit of a demo training with a representative with it. It looks very user-friendly. It's just something to think about. I can get more information on it if you need, need it. But it works really well for, um, work orders and, uh, supplies, inventory, all that kind of thing. And also, I, I don't know if this is the right time to bring it up, but two to, two, sometimes at most three days a week, I do have to pick up my kids at three and I work through my lunch. Um, and when my husband works, I have to pick up the kids at, um, and leave at three if that's an issue, just, you know.
Well, you're not getting paid for your lunch. Uh, Tim is.
Yeah, I'm just, I just want to be transparent and put that out there, in case anybody needs to know.
And as I said, I'm good. That's pre-approved.
Okay.
That's already, that already, listen, if you work, if you work straight through and, and make your eight hours or seven or whatever, whatever yours is at three o'clock, then that's your work day.
Right.
That's the way I see it.
That's the way I see it.
I don't do it as a normal practice. I just have to do it a couple of days a week sometimes.
Yeah, as long, as long as you and the clerk have that and it's, it was pre-approved, I, I don't see that being a problem.
Okay.
Uh, that's a little justification, what I think.
Okay, I just want to put that out there.
Yeah.
So, so what you're saying is with pre-approval, Tim can also do that? Is that what you're saying also?
Well, no, because he gets paid for his lunch hour. He can't, he can't call in and say, I'm gonna take my lunch hour. I work through my lunch hour and I'm going on by three o'clock. Because he got paid for his lunch hour, whether he worked or not.
I guess what I was thinking and it, it really, you don't, you don't have a, if he's not gonna clock out at lunch, you don't have that. What I was saying was if he was on a job and he's supposed to go to lunch at, at eleven thirty, but he needs twenty more minutes to, really, really get out, come back, crawl back in a hole when he finishes that, he still gets his lunch hour and it just starts a little bit later. But, uh, working too is lunch. Now, if he was so, go to seven hours, have an unpaid lunch or go to eight, have an unpaid lunch hour, be here till five o'clock, I don't think he would say that. Did we miss you?
No.
In the world.
Yeah.
Do we need motions on any of this?
No, that's all administered.
That's all administered. Okay, that's good. Okay, while we're talking about work orders, let me, let me throw this out. How, how difficult would it be for us to do purchase orders?
Not difficult at all.
Again, I'd like to say in two minutes, say I'm going, I need a purchase order to Townsend's or wherever. I need, uh, three joints of pie. I need ten pounds of nails. I need whatever. You fill out that purchase order and then when he brings back the invoice, that invoice will match that purchase order.
Right.
And then when we start to sign checks, you put them all together. You've got the check, student, you've got the purchase order, you've got the invoice. Uh, I, I don't know if that requires, I don't know if that require, uh, again, things are changing so quickly. Anything that I did twelve years ago before retiring, we used to have them by the booth. You just tear out one and have a coffee. There probably is a better way to do that now like this, but could you, could you, uh, research how we could start implementing purchases? Uh, wait, I'm sorry. What do y'all think about a purchase order?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Can we ask our to research that and bring us back something then and how we can start doing that? Just indiscriminate.
Or just break cheese or something.
Just indiscriminate purchasing. And maybe we could include that in the future for personal recreation and even fire department. Would we buy anything that we could be paying?
And box got the credit card to buy anything with. They need you to purchase them.
Well, and that is the last thing on my, on my plan there. We voted a year or so ago to, for the credit cards to be in the office here, be checked out by anybody that needs to use it and be brought back to their office. And I think that's not being done. And I think that's what we wanted done. I don't know if you saw one bill in here for nineteen hundred dollars to put that, but, uh, I think we need to have those credit cards locked up in here. And, and we need to have. Things that I can't prove, I, as far as I'm concerned, gossip, so to preface the next thing. I'm told that they, that household items and this and that and the others, bulk sometimes and coats and different things like that. I don't know that that, I have a blue to receive from Walmart or anything like that. But it will prevent those kinds of things if we do some of the things we're talking about now. I want to be able to defend any employee or any person within the city that has access to the card or purchasing or anything else. We ought to be the first line of defense for those people who want to, from outsiders say this is going on. And if we got that kind of backup, that kind of documentation, if you're talking about, we can do that when we say, here's the bill and here's what, here's what's under it, here's when it was purchased and things like that. Uh, so I, I, I think that'll apply to everybody and I think those cards will be lived here in the city hall.
Two all has.
Again, to quote Mr. Walsh, have that in my personal opinion.
Well, yeah. Well, I do too, I mean, yeah. I mean, that's.
We didn't have, what, three cards, two, three cards?
I think there's five Walmart cards. One added card.
There's, um, one Capital City credit card, um, in my office and one Capital City, uh, debit card. And I was given a Walmart card, which I only, the only thing I've used it for was the retirement card.
I think we have a debit card.
That's probably the most dangerous card we had.
They get it right, they, they get it right, they get it.
I've, I've been told that he, it, we prefer that Tim use the credit card.
I would prefer everybody use the credit card personally. You go back and challenge that.
And again, that may be one of those on the phone workplace, why we have a debit card. Uh, I don't want it to be something that we got to pay a grant or pay a, something like that. We have to do it that way if, if there's a legitimate reason, but it ought to be in the city hall at all times and see when it's being used. And we got a Walmart and a Capital City card and anything else that you.
If we've got the five cards, find out who's gone.
Yeah.
What they call.
And bring them, and, and bring them back in.
I believe there might be also gas cards too.
Oh, yeah, gas.
For the, the state or the city vehicles, the town vehicles. But I have those in the office as well.
It's big that the gas credit card is actually stored in a container at Circle H Gas Company. So that when the fire trucks go by there, they pull out the car and they don't tell them the PIN, but they don't, that's the way the fire department does that.
Sometimes with the fire department, it'd be difficult to say, we call that truck gets out there, it may run it for three hours and may burn a lot of gas and only go ten miles. But, uh, these other vehicles, uh, that is vehicle gas, if that vehicle don't have thirty seven miles since the last time it's filled it up and it takes twenty-five dollars to put it up and down, there's something wrong there. We need to have a, we need to have a, we need to have a matching mileage or something. We need to have a, a travel log with some of that. Now, I don't know if he's separating that from lawnmower or pressure washer or some other things like that, but just using that vehicle. And, uh, you're, you're filling that vehicle up every day. Of course, he drives home, we, uh, that's another benefit he's got. He don't have to, he don't have to.
And the county has a regular vehicle. The council really didn't have to let him do that. We, we went overboard on that. I mean.
It's one thing when Dave was traveling to the other end of town, but he's traveling across the county.
I think we can create a system.
Could you report us back something on that please? Is that all right with everybody?
Yes.
On everything we've discussed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Mr. Carter, that comes to you.
All right.
You got, you got a couple of things that you want to tell us?
Well, I, I was informed that y'all would want to discuss them. I don't have anything to offer. So what questions do y'all have for me about animal registration and the Life 360? I may have misunderstood what my global outlook was tonight.
Okay.
Ms. Gottlet let me know that they were going to be on the agenda and you wanted me to speak to them, but I'm not sure what you want me to speak about. What were the questions?
I think it goes back to probably a couple of meetings ago, we were beginning to go, we're supposed to, we're supposed to send out notices every year to, uh, to register your pets in the month of October.
Remember that last discussion?
That probably has not been done in a couple of, three years, uh, and, and it probably was not done because the, uh, only three or four people in the city, many was responding to that. It may have not been done because we didn't have any kind of enforcement language in the, in the ordinance. I think what our discussion was, whether or not we were to continue to do it or do we repeal that ordinance or discontinue that ordinance.
Well, how can we force somebody to bring their dogs down here and register them if they don't want to?
Same way you can pay their water bill if they don't want to.
I remember Margaret had asked me at one point if we could tie that actually to the buildings and the failure to do one could be a termination or cutoff on the other. Uh, I don't think, my opinion is that you can't do it that way. It's, uh, I don't like it, like a failure to get a building permit, that's a whole other process. You get cited and there's a fine involved, but you could just cut the water off arbitrarily over there and by ordinance, it can have to be arbitrary.
I don't mean that I think it's, I don't mean that I think that they're tied together. I mean, I think any ordinance that you have to be enforced, you have to enforce.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. Absolutely. If, if we just, if I was supposed to work on ordinance, I apologize.
I don't think you, I think we're still deciding if we're going to keep them or not. I don't think we're supposed to.
I don't think, based on our last discussion, as I recall it and talking to Margaret about it back then, like, because I remember that was the question, uh, one of the questions, why haven't? I have so much, there weren't anybody good reasons, Mr. Judy's reasons.
I think this come about a few years ago when we were having all the stray animals in.
We have lost dogs.
And some dog bites and some things like that. Sometimes I think there's, sometimes I think there probably are as many stray animals as they ever were and sometimes you drive all the way up to town and you don't see, you don't see anything out there.
Those, if you're reports of them, is that maybe what it is or if there are not fewer of them?
Uh.
People are going to deny that it's their dog.
Oh, absolutely.
If you say you need to go register your dog, I got, I got one. He's not registered. She's not registered, but I need to. But I could deny, say that's not my dog.
And the enforcement, I mean, we can make it enforceable, but the juice is probably not worth the squeeze there for that reason. If they're not collared and there's no way to prove it, they could just disavow that animal.
And then you, then you enforce it by having it picked up and taken out of town and then they'll decide whether it's theirs or not.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
I don't have a problem like it was at your place. I just don't have a problem like I did.
Yeah.
Is it worth it ever for us to try to keep that ordinance or should we just go ahead and feel?
I think that's what we discussed and that, the reason that I thought it was worth it is if there's ever a bite or anything, it's what's in my city. I told you that we, we doesn't cook.
Yes, sir.
You're supposed to have, supposed to get a tag and we knew that dog belongs to Ms. Carter. And if it's out here and it's killing the neighbor's chickens or it's done anything else, they can identify that, that dog. He was caught in one of our traps. Sometimes because it's not being controlled and I get it's caught in one of our traps. We can take it back, Ms. Carter, without her having to go through paying the county to get it back if we got that tag and like that. And you get that when you register. I think what Margaret used to do was every time that somebody new came in or every time they turned on a meter, she'd give them a, a little check this and, and ask if you have pets or like that. And they registered it that first time, but then they didn't register in the future, I think. It's kind of where she was at.
You know, another thing that comes to mind just from a legal analysis is having the ordinance and not enforcing it across the board and paying everybody the same bros. That, and a dog bite, that could arguably be a situation that creates liability, even though we're not responsible for code enforcement by our agreement with the county, um, or animal enforcement. So that, that would lead me to consider hiring issues and maybe doing away with it.
And I don't, I don't, I can't say that we can, uh, that we can tie the, uh, lack of reports or lack of businesses to the registration. Uh, we have less reports and we have less instances on that. Uh, I remember Miss Perkins and, uh, forgot the name of the lady who killed over in the Smith place, but we had two or three that were bites that I, I think those, it's been a long time to anybody in here. And, uh, and we probably don't because we, we're paying that price to have them picked up and do special things with them now. So I don't know that registration would be reduce those numbers of businesses or all that. So what's the, too, for the council?
So will that or will that do away with liability if we just done away with it?
It, it will prevent the possibility of it. It's not a clear question that there would be liability, but I can see where they create an attorney could come up with that in theory. Now, the real liability lies with the owner. It's really a civil matter. It's just a vanilla dog bite case that was appearing.
A mole that's turned into a silver.
Yes, sir. That would normally be the way it is, but I could see it, Marie Maddox, somebody to name somebody. I mean, she did, we all know, let's see, and others, and there's others and then they're, not casting aspersions on them, but they might pick up on a liability theory there where one doesn't exist in favor of the town and we don't need to be on the hook for somebody letting their dog.
And I think this is like, uh, like some other things, uh, there's nothing that I recall that requires us to have an animal control department or program. It just is, if you have one, it has to meet certain standards. If nothing requires us to have a fire department, but if we have one, it has to meet certain standards. Uh, and, and so I think, I think probably, uh, if we have the registration, that, that implies we have a program and that would imply that we have trained people and I don't For the sake of time, the chairman entertained a motion that we repeal that animal registration ordinance.
I'll make that, that motion to repeal the animal registration order.
Motion to stay. We repeal the ordinance with another one, right? You, you will help us out there, Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're going to motion in seconds. Is there any discussion on the motion? Mr. Walsh now?
Yes.
Or, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And sure, she is. Okay. Life 360. This may be.
Can I interrupt you here? Sure. One second. Do y'all want to have that, uh, ordinance ready for first reading in December? That quick?
Uh, I think we're not enforcing it right now anyway is if.
We can wait. I, I'm just going to say if you'd like for me to come back in December with that ordinance directed and, and get it to Ms. Gottlet ahead of time, be happy to do that.
Yeah. Can you get it, can you get it without you having to make the trail? And you made it or something like that?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. As quick as we can, I guess, because we're in violation of our own ordinance right now.
We'll put it on my calendar right now for a week after Thanksgiving.
Okay. Even, even that, if you got it back here then, we're going to have to advertise and then we'll have to be advertised, just have to be advertised twice.
Uh, after, for the second reading.
For the second, yes, sir. Has to be advertised.
Yes, sir.
All right.
And I'm sorry to interrupt y'all.
No, the last thing on the agenda was the Life 360 application or app. Uh, that may be, it may be a move forward, but I guess we need to, to discuss it. Uh, the previous quarter, uh, was opposed to, to having, uh, uh, in particular, I think our opposition was having it after hours. Uh, and that phone don't tell us what she, he or she was doing at any particular place. And she thought it was an invasion of privacy. There was some discussion as to whether or not if it was going to be on the city phone and they were going to be responsible for being on call all the time. We, I need to know what, I guess we need advice. I, I think I need advice. I don't.
I need to, because I don't clearly understand.
Yeah.
The way, the first thing that comes to mind is whether we require them to use the city phone and have it or whether it's optional. If it's optional and they accept it and take it, then the Life Six, Life 360 being on the phone is something they're aware of, they're on notice, so they're taking it, subject to that ability to monitor them. If you're requiring them to have it and then we have a Life 360 on there, that's forcing surveillance or I'm not saying that anybody's looking or, you know, paying a close attention, but people might see it like she mentioned as an invasion of their privacy. So to me, that's legally, that's the, that's the distinction. Do we require them to take it or do they opt into the phone itself? And I don't know the answer to that is, for one, I'd like to know does everybody have one and by what terms do they take it? Is it forcible thing or is it part of the, can y'all help me with that?
Do you have a phone?
I think we, I think when we did it.
Martin, do you have a phone? Everybody's got one.
Yeah. I think when we, when we gave them those phones, it's to cut out the use of private phone, we, we're going to do shitty business on shitty phone.
And that's a great idea from a public records standpoint because, you know, then you don't have to, because private phones, that's a real murky area.
Yeah.
And even though we'll all still do, uh, personal stuff on a public, you know, public entity or city phone that you still have to parse out, but then again, that's, that's the same thing as accepting the Life 360. You accept that your phone is going to be subject to being handed over for public records requests to get all the documents if somewhere it happened, a lawsuit or an injury or who knows what. Um, I mean, I, I think that if you're, if you're voluntarily taking it with notice, I think it's reasonable to require or, you know, if you're going to take the phone, the Life 360 is on it. But you don't have to take the phone, so thereby you don't have to take the Life 360 monitoring. But we may want to make, we may want to require them to have the phone because the public records issue, if that makes, if those two connect.
One attorney said, and I think it may have been even Mr., uh, few ways to hit these things, is you want to be careful using your own phone and your own computer because if you ever got into, uh, litigations or something like that, that's true. Your whole computer used to be in wide open and everything that you got to learn, every email, all that and your phone is the same way. So my, my opinion is, a couple, a couple of thoughts, maybe not opinions, a couple of thoughts, if it's not going to be meant to, why don't we buy it in the first place? If then, or Marcy, or Tim, or in future, boy, they have an auction, one good is to, is everybody gonna opt out? Then we, we don't have any, we kind of, we don't know if the time of in, or nine, three o'clock, or something like that. So my opinion is, it's, it's required, but that's, that's an opinion.
That's the easiest route, is to require it, and that covers more issues than just the monitoring, like we're talking about litigation, public records, those kinds of things. And I will say, litigation, even if it is a private device, there are ways, you get a court order and get it under seal, where the private device is gone through, with both attorneys present, and an IT person, and the owner of that device, and they will parse out data that's personal, that everybody gets to see it, but it doesn't necessarily come off of that device onto a third, uh, party storage that's made available to other people. And so they create, they window it down to the universe of what is a public record for the purposes of that case or that request, so that it just hasn't decided, so everybody's aware of that. But if, if we're gonna require them to have it, which I think is a great idea, I don't know if you can technically turn off the monitoring, I assume you can at a certain hour, and if you can, I would definitely want to do that for them. After the work day's over, if it's four o'clock, you know, then that stops monitoring the phone. But it's reasonable to be monitored, there's no reasonable expectation of privacy to not be monitored while you're at work at a public entity.
And if we had to call in, they could turn it back on, uh, if, if that, full time?
Like if they had an after-hours call?
After-hours call.
Yes, sir.
Well, we have a problem with that, because he drives his truck after hours and on Saturday. That's what we're trying to stop.
Is he, and it's the, it's the city truck, but he's driving it during personal hours.
Right.
Right, but the phone could still be off, and the Life 360 activation, because we're not talking about installing any vehicles, right? It's just a cell phone, and we could have it on that schedule. But unless, again, of course, Mr. Rogers pointed out, he gets called in for something.
I know the EMA's have it on their handles, is, uh, they can leave that, that's just... I said Joe's, Warren Greavel last time, I'll say something else tonight. Uh, but they know that, they know that, that's something that is a reasonable expectation, they took a patient from Animal City in noon come, they stopped them back on, but not at the breakers, or something like that, so, uh... I, I don't know what we can put on the truck, but sometime that may be, uh, a benefit to us, too. Well, they got, now they can, how many miles to get, and to get, how fast to drive, and things like that, I mean, that, that gives, that gives, that's real protection to the, to the company, to the property, to the entity that's, who's true.
A lot of folks are monitoring that information now?
Yeah.
They are.
Life 360 will do that, it'll tell you how far you've gone, it'll give you a map of what your activity was over X period of time, and how fast you're driving, I check on my wife all the time.
You know, if you're being recorded.
I hope so.
She doesn't believe you.
I'd like, I'd like to know what the truck is.
I would too, even on the weekend.
Yeah.
Well, let's have the Life 360 turned on, man, well, you know.
Is it legal to put the Life 360 on there?
You can monitor the vehicle, yes, ma'am, you can do, now, I don't know technically if Life 360, how you deal with the vehicle as opposed to the phone, I think there's a way to do that, I just...
I don't know.
I'm not familiar with the technical aspect of it. But if it's the city's vehicle, you can absolutely monitor the whereabouts of that vehicle, and there's a lot of ways, a lot of programs and, and technology to allow you to do that. There's no reasonable expectation that that vehicle just be in any old place.
There, there's two issues there, he's going on the phone, but he does travel a few of these sometimes. Or he turns the phone off, and still drives the vehicle, that's when you need it on the vehicle.
Yes, sir.
If you have a connection. Yes, sir.
Might offer something, I worked with, uh, Hood County Fleet Management, and installed GPS trackers on their systems, and there are GPS trackers that use 4G, like your phone, and it hooks straight to the battery. Um, I'm just thinking, that's maybe some combination of something to track the truck, and something to track the person.
Yeah, and there's a little monitor on it.
Be glad to help, the court's office researched that, but, uh, there's an option there, it's not too costly, it's a few dollars a month. Uh, but for the sake of what you're trying to save, maybe it works that, that's just a dollar here.
Well, it's not necessarily the phone or tracker, we want to track the vehicle.
Right, yeah, track it separately, have the, the 360 on its phone, but also put a tracker on that truck.
Right, they're two, two different things.
Yeah, he can take that phone to Mount Bull Park someplace.
Mm-hmm.
And it's all the way along, right, it, it doesn't decide a time.
Yeah, and, and I don't think any of us intends for this to be a, a witch hunt against Tim, but what we do now becomes policy, and when Tim is replaced, somebody comes home knowing that this is what we're had. Uh, Tim just happens to be the man of the school now, Lynn or Marcy just happen to be the people that's up. This, this year now, the things we do, we need to do it as a policy, so that it doesn't have to change with every counselor, or every time an employee changes.
I'll be quite one more thing, I might mention, it's just good fleet management. It doesn't have to be about employees, it's just about fleet management, right?
You know that Mr. Phillips is Lynn's brother, you didn't know that?
I don't.
Do you see a conflict with him?
No, sir.
Anything that he just said?
No, sir.
Do we feel uncomfortable with him doing that?
Yeah.
If it would, some...
I want to talk with him, like, just...
Previous experience or something?
Yeah, because we need something.
Okay. Thank you for that offer. Yes.
Um, does that mean, I, I don't know if we made a decision to, uh, turn off the Life 360 for employees when we leave, or do we just keep it on all the time? I don't even know what we're doing.
Really, it's not gonna affect you, Marcy.
Okay.
You need your, you need your phone on all the time, in case a water line breaks, someone's gonna call, it's gonna be you.
Well, I mean, I leave the phone on, I'm talking about the Life 360, would it stay on after I leave work? Or would I keep it, would I keep it on all the time?
You could turn it off, because you don't have a vehicle, you don't have a city vehicle.
I'd, but if I wouldn't do it, I'd turn it off, if I was you.
I, I, if you have to come in, then you can turn it on and come in, but, uh, when you leave here at four o'clock, or whatever your time is, at the same table as Lynn. If you get called and you have to respond, then they're just like Tim, they'll turn it on. Okay, anything else for Carter? Anything we can ask you further, if you need to tell us?
I was gonna say, are there any other questions, probably about anything, I'm, I'm happy to take a stab.
So are we gonna, we're gonna do the Life 360 on the phone, or we're gonna put anything on the truck?
My opinion, we would, uh...
Do what Joe's talking about, the, he'll send, he'll send me some links, and I'll report back to y'all in December if you want me to, cut some prices and that kind of stuff.
Of course, everything we do has to be tied to expenses, I know, but I, I think that that's gonna be a good, a good, I think we need to do that.
Both.
If the, if the council, do we need, do you want a motion?
Do we have to make a motion?
We can just direct her to pursue this, or you?
I, I can get a vote on it, yes, sir. It's gonna involve expenditures and something totally new, y'all.
The chairman of the entertainment motion, that we put 360 on all the employees' phones, and that we research, uh, uh, a simpler device for the county vehicle, for the city vehicle.
I make that motion?
We have a motion as our second.
I see. Go ahead, be it.
No, that's all.
We have, we have a motion as second, any discussion on a motion? If I'm gonna do this backwards, we have to discuss it. How you, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And the sheriff, she is. Anything else from anyone? Mr. Lynn, Chris Hill hasn't appeared, uh, anyone in the audience that hasn't spoken a block to? We would entertain a motion to adjourn? Approved. Thank you all, I so appreciate it, you have a great holiday.